Hello.
Why is she...
Hello.
Er!
Hello.
Hi.
Oh.
Goodbye!
Hi.
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 Bye.
You're scared.
Oh, they're in there.
Hey, this is right.
All right, good evening. This is the March 11th, 2013 Rhinebeck Town Board meeting, and we will start with the pledge from the Girl Scout Daisy Troop. We have a few members here who want to come and volunteer and do some community service. So ladies, are you ready to do the pledge?
I think we'll say yes.
Say yes, and we'll all hear you.
Yeah!
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic, the free and fair land, one nation, under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nice job. Play ball. Yeah, you're well done. Come on, guys. Yeah, you will be. So guys, you'll be on Panda. You'll be on Panda coming up every Thursday, okay, for the next month? Yep. So be sure to watch yourself on Public Access TV, okay? And it is Girl Scout Cookie Season, so remember that.
What's your troop number?
They're all gone.
They're all gone, now it's quiet.
They should have to sit through the meeting to actually get the badge. The town board meeting.
They're little kids. So that was the Girl Scout Daisy Troop, and the troop leaders were Liz Allen and Dr. Krems, Dr. Mary Krems, so we thanked them for coming.
Very nice.
We have a few announcements. We're going to have Grievance Day for tax assessments. That'll be on May 28th, but before that, there'll be the Open Book Days at Town Hall. These days on which the assessors are available to meet with the property owners to answer questions about their property assessments. These will be held in May, May 6th, 7th, 9th, and 11th. May 6th from 2:00 to 4:00, and 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. May 7th from noon to 4:00, May 9th from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and May 11th from 9:00 to 1:00. You can get these dates again at Town Hall, 876-3409. Grievance Day is May 28th.
I'm sorry, Tom, are the hours posted on the website?
No, I don't know. Are they? Okay, they can get them on the website, too. March 25th, the Town Board will have a regular board meet... Oh, sorry, the regular Town Board meeting is canceled due to Passover on March 25th, so the fourth Monday, there will be no Town Board meeting. There is still a Rec Camp Counselor summer position open, or positions available for candidates who are 16 and older. Applicants can download from the Town website and should submit the application to Town Hall. So that's 16 and older camp counselor positions.
Tom, can I just interrupt again? I'm terribly sorry. This is setting a bad precedent.
Can you hear?
But Bruce, I had a question today from someone. Are the lifeguards, when is that hiring process starting?
That's... We've already... Well, we've pretty much filled up with lifeguards, but we can take more applications.
Okay. All right, good. Thank you. Sorry.
All right, good. We'll have the Easter egg hunt here at... The town Easter egg hunt will be held down at the recreation park down by the pool area and the Thompson-Mazurilla Park area, also known as. That's... So that's on Saturday, the 23rd of March. That starts at 10:00 a.m. So bring your own basket. There are reports that the Easter Bunny will be there.
Are there any age restrictions?
Oh, yeah. I think so.
We usually tackle anybody that's too big.
Anybody over, like, five foot?
No, there's some big three-year-olds.
Yeah, so... But there's over 2,000 eggs, and I think Rhonda stuffed all the eggs this weekend, so it's a lot of work, and the Rec Committee has done a lot of work also, so. Easter egg hunt, Saturday, the 23rd, 10:00 a.m. Registration for the 55th Annual Landsman Kill Stocking Club Fishing Contest, that's the trout fishing contest, will be on... Held... Registration's on Saturday, the March 16th. That's at the Village Mobile Station. That is going to be here at the... I got to get this clear, there's two mobile stations in the Village. One is down here at the corner by the... By 308 and South Street, on the corner, right?
I think it's the one over here.
It's the same owner. I don't know if the other one's having it well, so we're not... Just the one at the corner down here, okay? So that's on Saturday at... I'm sorry. Yeah, that's Saturday, the 16th, the registration, and stocking day is Saturday, April 6th. The stocking day is April 6th at 12:30, and that begins at the Rhinebeck High School. Registrations will also be taken at that time, on the 6th, at the high school. The contest will be held on Sunday, the 7th, at 6:00 a.m., and there's always a breakfast at the Legion, so 7th, Sunday, 6:00 a.m., breakfast at the Legion, and they have a raffle, too. So anybody else have announcements?
Tom, let me just remind the public that workforce housing is available at the Gardens. There's some information on it on the table outside the Clerk's Office. If anybody is interested and qualifies for subsidized housing at the Gardens, they should please come down, find the information. They can speak to Hudson River Housing, who is handling the program for the town. And anybody who wants additional information, speak to the Town Clerk, who'll refer them to Hudson River Housing, or to me, or the Open Space and Affordable Housing Committee members.
Yeah. Good thing, I'm glad you mentioned that. I've talked to Hudson River Housing, and they're concerned people will try to figure out whether they can afford it or not, and they're concerned that people will underestimate their possibility to be a part of the program, but just let Hudson River Housing try to figure out that for you, if you want to be a part of it, and all that information is confidential, so please take advantage of that if you're interested. Anybody else with information?
Board of Assessment and Review, we need two candidates to fill open seats. It's a very great way to serve the community. It's a finite commitment. You really have to go to a four-hour training on May 2nd, and then there's one day in May where you sit and listen to grievances. I'm going to write up a brief. I'll have it in the Clerk's Office for anyone who's interested, anyone with any knowledge of real estate, real estate values, land here in Rhinebeck, or any other person who wants to serve, please come forward.
Great, very good. We have minutes for approval from the February 25th, 2013. Anything, John?
My apologies, I forgot to give everybody a copy. It was emailed to you. My apologies. You don't have a copy in your book.
I read it already.
I read it.
Okay. Okay. All in favor to approve the February 25th regular Town Board meeting minutes?
Want a motion?
Oh, motion?
Was that a motion?
Yeah, motion, second?
Second, motion.
A second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Let me abstain, because I haven't read it.
That's so moved.
Would you like a hard copy, Jill, from John?
I don't think you want to wait now for me to read it.
No, it's...
No presentations, or anybody for liaison reports?
I spoke at length to cemetery today, and they're revisiting their fees, and in looking at that, they're still gathering data about what other towns charge, but they've noticed that there are a couple of items that are not even addressed, like, say, what happens if a burial has to occur on a Sunday, which would be overtime for our employees, or on holidays. How is that addressed? So they're looking into a couple of items that aren't even listed yet as a fee and needs to be put in. They also wanted to know the status of the mower. If the... The mower currently is working, the Gravely, or Gravely, I don't know how you pronounce it, but it's currently working. They don't know how long it will work, but if it doesn't make it through the summer, they wanted to know if we did have a new mower in this budget for this year. And secondly, they wanted to know how the hiring is going for the part-time person, and if... When are we going to know who Gary's going to have for that?
Yeah, they haven't brought that up yet, but yeah, we should bring that up.
The other thing is that for putting in the monuments, that we... The little monument markers that we approved at the last meeting, they need someone with a background in surveying to make sure that they're being put in the correct spots, and maybe that person could go out and mark them in an afternoon, and just put the markers in, and then inspect the installation of one or two of them, just so they know that they're being done correctly. So we may be able to fold that in, hopefully, into Marie's fee for the whole surveying. So we're hoping that, because Dave Green isn't up for...
Queen.
Queen. Dave Queen isn't up for being able to help out like he had hoped.
Right, right.
So I told them we would make sure that they had the right person, or a person that could do the job, and to help make sure Gary's doing it correctly. So that's all I have on that, and we had a request from... For dog control, we had a request, and you might need to help me with this one, Elizabeth.
Do you want me to take it? Aileen Moore reached out to me. They... Their animal control officer is looking for an intermunicipal agreement to house dogs here, and their control officer works in Hyde Park and Red Hook, so I'm going to refer it to Gina, and maybe at the next meeting, she could come back to us with some more information.
Yeah.
They would pay to keep those.
So that could be something that would pertain to both Rhinebeck, Red Hook, and Hyde Park, that, as I understand it, is the same dog control officer, and as I understand it, she went out for our dog control officer when he wasn't available recently, too, so there might be something to develop off of that.
Exactly, and certainly sharing our kennels for a fee, and...
I think it looks promising.
Good. I will... Here's the paper on it, and I'll forward you electronically, and I'll let Aileen... Well, you know, put you both in touch.
And her contact information, is there, not Aileen, Aileen's, but...
Stephanie.
No, Stephanie's not here, but you'll get it through Aileen or Aileen's.
Yeah, she's the same office, so.
Thanks.
Okay, so that's all I have for liaison.
Yeah, the cemetery, the monument thing pertains to everything after that, so it is important to have that, so we got to... I'm glad you brought that up, because we'll have to move forward in that, in order to move forward with the program, the natural burial cemetery. So I assume the committee will bring that up in the near future, because there'll be some expense possibly with it. Dave Queen has volunteered a lot, so...
Endless. He's done a fantastic job, as has that entire committee, like most of our committees. They don't think that the work will actually start until May, so they're gathering a lot of data and working on the fee structure, which should be back to us by the next meeting or the meeting after that.
Okay, good. Anybody else for liaisons?
Want to go, or you want me to?
Oh, go ahead, go.
Okay. The ongoing saga with the beaver, it looks like we're going to end up doing it ourselves. I waited in there last week and got stuck. It's very interesting, very remote, there's no bars on your phone or anything, and when you get stuck, you say, "Oh, I might die here," and then you say, "Well, maybe that's not so bad." And, you know, it's a... I've got pictures, so I can show you the... What the whole damn structure looks like, so you can see that.
Literally, the whole damn structure.
Yeah, yeah, both ways.
Bobby's continuing... You say you got stuck. You were captured by a beaver? You were stuck in the mud?
I was stuck in a hole in the ground, and there was snow, and I stepped in a hole and got wedged in, and I don't know.
Bruce.
So... But I'm going to drop cookies the next time.
Take a flare, yeah, take a flare next time.
Yeah.
Take a buddy.
Well, that's hard to find. I don't know. Bobby's continuing to work with... On the tile and the showers, he's got one side done, starting on the other side. He's making... Starting to make really good progress with that, so finally after...
At the red park at the pool.
Yeah, yeah. The LWRP workshop, John took the bull by the horns, set a date, and people are signing up for that...
Was it April 10?
April 10.
Putting it on calendars. Is it going to be in the basement of the Star or here?
Here.
Okay.
So the world will go out on that. This is good progress. The rec hiring continues. On Friday, I met with the couple of people, three people from Red Hook. One of them was their attorney, on the dog park to start drafting the IMA between the two towns, and also to discuss their dog park law and our dog park law. I got a note from Warren this afternoon about that, so he's working on that, but they're taking the lead on that, so I'm not really worried about it. I didn't mean that anyway. I've just... It's not going to cost us anything. As far as the Town Hall goes, we've talked about the heating system here is kind of making us nervous, and Bobby's trying to get estimates for the asbestos removal, so that's... Those are the big-ticket items from me. Thanks.
Can I just jump back in with an issue that came up in zoning this week, that I want to get out to the public about, since January 1, all new homes that are built in the town have to be LEED certified, LEED Gold, I believe, right?
I don't know.
But they need to check with the zoning office before their architect starts drawing up plans, because we had some plans come in that were not LEED certified, and there's a lot of parameters that need to be met to meet that. So before anyone starts expensive work, they need to know what they need to make a proper design and architectural plan. The plans, or what the necessities of that are listed on our website, and they're listed down in the zoning office. So if people check that before they start, they'll save themselves time and money.
With respect to affordable housing, I've given to Warren a draft deed done by the developer, and the two agreements that we have, and a draft, a very short cover filing, and Warren is going to take a look at this and assure us that the deed, when filed together with the agreement and everything else, makes sure that the restrictions that we have in the agreement run with the land. He hasn't given me an estimate, other than saying that probably two hours would not be enough time to do this. I will be speaking to him in the next couple of days, and I'll have a better idea how much time he would estimate, and I'll send that around to members of the board.
Thank you.
All right. I've been in reference to the assessors, sort of, even though we are not in a taxing authority. I was at a meeting with the mayor and the superintendent of the schools in reference to the proposed project at the North Texas Hospital that includes 75,000 square feet of improvements or developments, and there's a concept from the developer to have a pilot program which would free him as an owner for seven years of taxes. So they have proposed to do this, and their profitability concept, to allow them to do this, would be to be allowed not to pay taxes for seven years, and after that, it'd be 100% taxes. Even though we are not the taxing authority, we do have a foot in, because our tax assessor will be involved in this. So what's going on now is the mayor and the school will meet with their attorneys to develop the possibilities of how to either work with this or develop a different program that would work with this.
Will you meet with them?
Yeah, I'll be with that also, you know, that also, and also an assessor, member of the assessor's office will be there.
Will we have our attorney for the assessors, our cert attorney?
Well, let me ask you, if you want... I mean, we really... It's up to them to do this. We really don't have any say.
Can we...
But if you want to...
Do we say yea or nay? I mean, can we...
We could send a letter of support or not, but we really have no authority to say...
Why would... What bit of money are we talking about?
For the Village, I don't...
For us?
For us, no.
I'm confused. Why aren't we a taxing authority?
Because it's within the Village.
But that's general fund.
Well, we wouldn't collect that.
Yeah, that goes money... The Village is in the town.
You and I pay money to the town, so...
Right, but I think...
I don't know what they're doing.
That's what their attorney said.
I think the Village takes...
Yeah, well, they're wrong.
I think the Village takes the lead, is the lead on it, but it's certainly... My understanding is that we have say, and not all of the new space, it's almost 80,000 square feet, is taxable. About a third of it is.
About a third of it is, right.
And...
Well, let me ask you, should we invite our tax attorney into it?
Is this something we need to discuss in executive session, or...
No, no.
I mean, why would we... Opening it up, why would we agree to a pilot program? I would like the hospital to come and explain to us what the ramifications are. Well, I think they're going to the Village, and why would we...
Why would you agree to it?
Why would we?
Well, that's the question, right?
Do we need... I mean, my understanding is pilot programs are done to encourage development, and do we need to encourage development at the hospital?
Right.
I don't know if we need to at the hospital. We've done it before. We did it with Arbor Ridge.
The Baptist home, yeah.
So, and sometimes it's a help to get them off, get the projects off the ground and get them started. What... I think the difference with the Baptist home was it was a graduated payment.
Yes, stepped up.
So they paid very little the first of the seven years, but they were at like 90% by the time they got to year seven.
Right.
Certainly, in seven years, the world can change. We've seen what, you know, happened from 2008 to now, you know, in less than seven years. I just... It's... And I've heard from a lot of constituents, as I'm sure you guys have, a lot of taxpayers, reading the article in The Observer, that this is up for consideration.
Well, it was their proposal.
As I say, I'm not sure why they shouldn't come and talk to us as a board, and I would suggest it's really not tax cert. I think Warren probably ought to be there with you.
Maybe you're right, it's not tax cert.
Well, then I'm getting consensus to bring Warren in on this, at least Warren. I mean, tax cert would be for something else.
Right, right, right. I think Warren is the attorney that you should work with, and I think they should come and speak to this board, as well as to the Village. I'm not quite sure why the Village is the lead on this, you know, why aren't we all involved?
Let me call Warren on it, and we'll get ourselves in it.
So you'll speak to Warren?
Yeah.
And the other thing is, do we have... Is the assessor's office, and I can check with him, too, we're... Tom and I work in this, do we have any estimate as to what we're talking about, dollars in that?
Dollar-wise, we were trying to talk about that today. They were given a number by the developer, you know, that's their number to the Village. It doesn't include the number to the school.
Sure, the assessors will come in.
Yeah. The assessors, I mean, they'd have to figure it out as comparable office space to other buildings in the town, or whatever, or in the area.
About 25, you know, 28,000 square, right?
Oh, it's a third of whatever it would be.
A third of 80.
Seventy-five, whatever. I mean, that's what they proposed. There's other concepts out there, too.
What was their rationale for asking for it, Tom, or...
They wanted to... In order for them to be profitable to do this, that was their rationale, to give some leeway, because, as I understand it, they weren't there. As I understand it, they wanted to be able to pay for it while it was vacant, while it was being developed, so...
And they estimate that it'll take seven years to build it?
Well, that's something that we have to, you know, ask them. There is a county thing, that they can go to some IDA, which is a program over 10 years, and it's like a portion of 50%, from the first year all the way down. The 10th year would actually be the 100%, so...
What does IDA mean?
It's some sort of a...
Industrial Development Authority.
In the county, right? And that's something that would... If we didn't even agree with it, they could always supersede us.
Supersede us?
To them, and we would have no choice.
Could we appeal to the county?
Well, if they choose to do that, then I guess that's what falls in line, as I understand it. Are you familiar with that stuff yet?
They'd have to make this an industrial development zone, then.
You know, I don't know, I went to one meeting for two hours.
Well, you know, it's good we're starting to look at it, and it's on our radar, and we'll, you know...
Okay. Both the Town and the School had an attorney there, so I'll have Warren.
The Town or the Village had an attorney there?
The Village. We're the Town, by the way.
Yes. Thank you for reminding me.
You reminded me, so... All right, so you guys have given the green light to get Warren involved and plan with that, okay?
And we'll get them... You'll ask them to come and talk to us?
Yeah, I mean, maybe he should meet with them first, maybe Warren should meet with the School and the Village, and then we'll have some, you know, something to move off from before they meet to meet with us, the developer.
Oh, so, yeah, come in, good.
Okay.
I don't know why Warren has to meet with them before they come and present their plan.
No, I mean with the School and the Village, so that he's up to date with them on what they have, and then we can learn from that, and then meet with the developer.
Okay, good.
All right. Anything else from committees or liaisons? I believe, are we approving a member for the CAB tonight?
Yes, is that in this part? I'm sorry, what was the question?
Are we approving the member for the CAB tonight?
It's a resolution.
What's farther down?
Okay. All right, if there's no more committee reports, then we will move on to business, and item one is a resolution to approve Abstract 3 vouchers V.232 through V.291 for $160,233.07.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I just have one question about Central Hudson Bill. Did you guys look at it, just the air... I guess I don't know how often this is, but the... Oh, it says it right here, 128 through 227. We have a $678 bill at the transfer station. Is it electric heat?
Yeah, we said we were going to check on that, Joe.
Yeah, Bruce is going to check into it, I gave him the bill.
We had been shutting it down to 50, or whatever it goes down to, but maybe it was left on for some reason.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll have to keep on it or...
Do you want me to check on it, or...
No, I'll do it.
One thing, this resolution, as it's written, it doesn't include the selective insurance, so the number that we're approving should be 163,339,60.
Okay. I did sign a voucher on that just today, so I don't know if that's what that...
I'm sorry, I missed the whole thing.
I'm going to grab my pen over here.
Nope, it's in here.
We knew there was a penalty for the 15 days.
No, it's not in here.
She worked it in.
Yes, yeah, we did. We were told. They did have the option of waiving it, but they opted not to waive it.
What was the penalty? Do we know?
No, is it that high? I thought the bill was about...
Okay, it's incorrect here, that's what Gina said.
Well, it says January 1 to January 15. That's for the coverage.
How much is the bill?
The bill is $3,106.
So you think the $3,000 was the penalty?
No, that's the coverage.
I guess the coverage.
It can't be, because it was prorated, so it's coverage plus a penalty.
I'm sorry, the agenda is incorrect, but the resolution is correct.
Resolution is correct, yes.
The resolution is correct. The agenda wasn't updated.
Does it type up either way?
Exactly.
Right, okay.
They bill every two months.
That's what I thought.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item two is a resolution approving preliminary capital project for 213, 2013, abstract for $193.35.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item three is a resolution for approving budget funds transfers, budget fund transfers.
A, a motion.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 So moved.
What, what did we finally decide with the cell phone for the safety inspector?
We allowed him to use his own.
So this is an allowance to him?
Aye, that was not brought before us.
I'm sorry, where are you, Bruce?
I'm on the, what we just approved, and we're taking money away from supplies and giving it to the cell phone for the safety inspector. I thought the last meeting or some meeting.
We, we.
That he could use his own phone, yeah.
Well, what we did on the last meeting was we dropped his phone from the town plan, you know, we had five cell phones, and there was no discussion of reimbursement.
Okay.
I think it was about, I think it comes to about $50 a phone a month on the plan after taxes. Is that about right?
Well, maybe we ought to skip this and ask Shelley what this transfer is.
The liaison, the?
I am for zoning.
No, I'm, I'm building.
For safety.
No, do you want to?
As far as I know, we were just canceling his cell phone. Should I get Shelley now or you want to come back to this? Why don't we come back?
I think we already, did we already vote on it?
We already voted on it. I'm just, I'm just trying to understand what we're doing. I, you know, it's 18 bucks, you can figure it out and we can adjust it in the next meeting if we need to.
Let's find out what it is.
Okay. Okay. Item four is a resolution approving the, to the conservation advisory board, Karina Borden, who we interviewed.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. She's fantastic, and I think we're really lucky to have her and her husband as new members of our community.
Is the Easter Bunny this year?
No, next year maybe.
Should have made that a stipulation in that appointment.
I was trying for that.
Item five is a resolution authorizing the acceptance of the drainage easement. A motion and second.
Motion.
I need.
Where's 121?
This is the drainage one we're up to?
Yeah.
Yeah, I looked it over, it looked fine. I checked with.
Second.
Kathy. She thought it was fine, so.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Hi, Victoria.
So moved. Item six is amending the February 25 planning and zoning fee schedule.
Motion.
Second.
The only change in this is with respect to the fees for the variances, and we're bringing them down. Our initial fees really were out of sync with our surrounding towns, so that's the reason for the reduction.
And also, the zoning board of appeals communicated to me that they were afraid that if they were excessively high, people would just ignore them and do things illegally. So to just encourage people to stay within the law. We felt like it was prudent to reduce them.
Any, was this the ones that were approved on December last year?
Yeah.
I don't think we were here for that, but.
Yeah, it was December 13, but then it was readopted in February.
With the sign fee change.
Right, right.
And now we're changing it one more time. So I think everyone's vetted it and I think we're in good shape now, so thanks.
Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item seven is a resolution relating to the charges of town employees for medical coverage.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion on that?
Well, we should explain what we're doing here.
Well, what we're doing here is deferring the second part of what we had voted on with respect to employee contribution. We're still in negotiations with the union employees, so this would only apply to non-union employees, so we want to see where we.
So we're freezing the contrib, we're keeping it at the 12 and a half percent?
Yes.
And not doubling it to 25.
Well, we're deferring it.
Until July.
Deferring it until July 1, and we'll look at it at that point.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item eight is a resolution accepting the proposal for the continued landfill reporting and sampling.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion on that?
Well, I just, they sent this to us and I just looked at the budget. It's, it's like 300, 400 bucks higher than what the budget is for it this year. I don't know whether we underestimated it in the budget or what. It's, it's still lower than we'd had in the past.
It's lower than we had in the past, but I thought that they had said after we had a certain amount of time where our, our findings were below any problem?
Yeah, but we blew that with the beaver situation.
Ammonia?
We're back on the radar, so.
Damn beavers.
Beaver dam.
Beaver dam.
Somebody, you have a budget?
Yeah, I think we were at 6450 for this, for this year. I'm just going to find it. Yeah, 6450. So that's a $350 increase. It is more work now with the, with the water table, the way it is, they have to come out more.
We have an issue there, so.
Yeah.
So it's only 350 more than what was budgeted, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. And how can we pay for that?
Take it out of repairs.
Repair?
Yeah, for the landfill.
Okay.
You want to?
I'll say aye.
All in favor, aye?
I'll say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
I'll come up with a budget amendment.
Yeah, okay, good, all right.
You have to sign the agreement.
Item nine is a resolution accepting the bits for the pool repair, pool repair.
Motion.
Second.
This is the starting blocks at the pool. There's six of them, one for each lane for the swim team. And the plates that are there are steel and they've rotted out. They're rusty, we can't get the bolts out of them, or Bobby can't get the bolts out of them anymore. And so these are stainless steel, they should last forever. We can't really use the ones that we have anymore and.
In some cases, the bolts broke.
Yeah.
So there's.
Yeah.
Nothing to be done with them.
Yes, it's, so it's time.
How, where will this come from in the budget?
Does it come out of capital? This would be the pool capital fund.
Okay. It's not a bad price for six of them.
Okay, so.
And they'll be able to do them prior to the start of the season, is that correct, Bruce?
Well, let's see, the way we're going with everything else.
Season, when season may not.
We'll say hope, so.
Season may not be starting until what, November? No, I'm just kidding.
Okay, so, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item 10 is a resolution adopting the application certification form for, for planning and zoning board of appeals and the building department. That'll be chapter.
This is, do you want me to?
Yeah, go ahead, definitely.
In our zoning review group, it was suggested that in order to protect us, we should, John Lyons graciously drafted this for us again to more volunteer work, so thank you, along with Dave Baldorf and Michael Trimble giving their input. This should go to any applicant who's, any person with an application before the zoning board, the planning board, or looking for a construction permit, a building permit. And it's really a notarized affidavit that states that the applicant is giving us true information. It, it's a level of protection for us, and we're going to forward it to each department.
Any questions?
I think it's great, I think it's really good, and I hope it's going to be posted on our website as well, so people can download it there. The only thing that I wondered, and John had his reasons, I'm sure, but since it's for our protection, for in case they don't follow what they've applied for or do things beyond what they were approved for, it says, "I understand and agree that the submission of false or inaccurate, inaccurate information to this board may result in the denial of my application or in the revocation of permits or approvals." Why don't we have or some sort of punishment or legal action or?
Well, I think it's.
Vlogging.
Vlogging.
Bringing back the stocks. We want to impress upon the applicants the importance of being truthful in the application. So we're asking for a sworn notarized statement where they're testing to the veracity of what they're applying for. And then we have other recourse.
Okay, I, I would like that recourse to maybe be spelled out a little stronger, but I totally trust John Lyons.
Yeah, I would like to accept this as is, and if you guys have questions, you can certainly call him up and push for it. Michael Trimble and David are very comfortable with it. We've vetted, we've all vetted it. It's a firm recommendation.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye. We need a motion and second.
I think there was, right, yeah?
No.
Oh, motion and second.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
That's so moved.
Thank you.
Can we come back next month and put vlogging in it?
Only if you bring back public stocks.
Okay.
So items for discussion, we have the county block grant opportunities for the tech and zoning software.
Okay, I think, is it all right, do you want me to, somebody have any, okay, I think I put it on the agenda anyway. I think it would be really helpful for us to have either a workshop, a workshop session where we meet and go over this on the 15th. It's going to be available. I had a long talk with Ann Saylor today. Owen Rafter is heading up these municipal consolidation shared services grants. These are the grants that were promised to the municipalities in exchange for cutting our sales tax. I just think that the bent of them is slightly different than what we first believed they would be, and we're going to have to get our money in sharing services or coming up with shared services, either with the village or other municipalities. So it's going to take some more thought. I don't know that we can get our town tech initiative funded by this. If not, I'll urge to have the town board fund that through some capital funds money, and we should look to get other funds. I think we're going to have to put some workshop time into it. So I'd like to schedule it. I'll try and talk to Owen Rafter before, you know, we schedule it.
County planning?
Yeah. He wasn't in today, so I spoke to Ann Saylor. Hyde Park has reached out to us, and Gina and Joe are going to meet with Hyde Park and a couple of the municipalities in pursuing the software for the building, planning and zoning departments, thinking that if we go into it with several municipalities and if we're all buying the same, we can save and do that, tailor it as a shared, shared service initiative.
Right, right.
So.
You know, just from the village, anybody from the village can go to that, it'd be great to.
Yeah.
I know Hines had mentioned something in the past about the zoning.
Yeah, well, that's why we need to, you know, get, we should have some workshops and get them, get them on board. The county's really, I'll read it here, they're considering applications from municipal governments that result in consolidation of services, shared services, either, you know, regional delivery of services, planning or implementation of municipal consolidation, and other efficiency improvements. That's the sort of vague one that maybe we can slide in on the tech initiative. The grants are going to be available on the 15th, they're due to the county on the 28th, and they'll.
What month, you're talking about?
I'm sorry, the 15th of March, they're due to the county at the end of June, the 28th of June, and we should hear about funding at the end of September. One of the things that they're doing, which is really great, is they're going to give us a character limitation so that we don't have to go on and on and on, like whereas, you know, they, they want a straightforward, very simple application.
Right.
I think we just need to brains, get some guidance, brainstorm and go for it. And certainly, anything that we do at the village would be great, but I don't think we can get our, we may have to look beyond the town hall tech initiative. So I don't know if you guys.
I think that's a shame.
Well, let's see, you know, I haven't talked.
It's not our fault. But it's a shame.
Fault blame, those are good onus.
There is blame.
We'll figure it out, we'll get the money one way or another, we just may have to be creative, so I think we've got to spend some time on this. Do you guys want to set something now or?
I think we ought to see the application.
You can go online.
And, you know, I think we're talking sometime in April. I'd certainly like to see.
Well, the grant applications are going to be on, they're on the website now, and I don't.
Oh, the applications have been released?
Yeah, you could go to, I'll send you, guys, all the link.
Why don't you send us the link? But before we waste time on it, I guess I would like to study the application, maybe talk to.
There's no studying, it's us applying in our words for what we want money for. We have to be proactive and get guidance and figure out a way to go after these available funds. That's been the recommendation to me, so if anyone, you know, one is you guys working with Hyde Park on the, whether it's municipality or whichever other software you decide, and the other is, let's start looking at things that we think we need money for and see if we could work with the village or, I mean, I'm pushing because the time is now, it's next week, it's on.
Yeah, but we have till June 28th to apply.
Right.
You know, I think each of us can think of things other than the tech initiative.[1591.83] Certainly Gina and I are planning on applying for the software. I think the first step is to figure out which one we want.
What do you mean by which one?
Well, we have to... From people, we got to figure out which one we're comfortable with, and then talk to some other towns. I plan on talking with the village as to whether they have any interest in the software that we pick and whether it's feasible for them to use what we pick, and then we should talk to other towns. But, you know, that's going to take a few weeks if you want to have a workshop on what other...
I would like to. The eligibility and the project definitions are all posted, so...
Maybe you could send that around to the rest of us.
It's extremely complex, and I've only applied for one grant in my whole life, which was very streamlined, and this is very, very complex.
Well, they're trying to, they're trying to make it not complex. I'm just urging that we get ahead of this instead of waiting until, you know...
I attended the seminar to help make it more understandable, and Bruce, I think you were in on that as well, but...
This was for the state grant or for the county grant?
Yeah, this was for the state.
Right, this is county.
Yeah, but, but there's a lot of overlap, and if we apply to one, the worst of the work will be done, and we could use that to apply for the other. In many cases, they're asking for the same information. So since we're doing the work, we need to maximize the usage of it, seems to me. And I would like it sooner rather than later, because it's going to take us a long time to pull all the information together.
Well, here's the application for the county. It's two pages. They really want us to be succinct, so it's really up to us to identify what we'd like to go after funding for and what's appropriate, given the guidelines. You guys, you know...
Do you want to set up the workshop, Elizabeth?
I'd love to.
Okay.
You want to pull out some dates now, or...
Joe?
Well, I'd do it sometime in April, so we...
March, so March is out totally?
I'd prefer to think about it before we actually start talking. Sometimes it helps to think about good approaches, and I don't think as a group necessarily has to do it. So if you want to do, say, early April, that will give us a chance maybe to talk to Hyde Park.
Hyde Park's having a meeting on the 20th, which...
Of what month?
Of March for the municipality stuff, which you guys should jump on. I'll forward you all that stuff from the supervisor's office.
How about Monday, the 8th of April, Joe, which is the town board meeting?
Why do you want to do it on a day you're having a town board meeting? I thought...
It's a workshop.
You wanted to vote a workshop to it as a whole separate meeting.
I think, why not?
The week before.
That's a good workshop topic for that meeting. I don't see why not.
Well, we're not having a meeting for a month. I assume we might have some business.
Well, you want to do it Monday, April Fool's Day? That could make for a fun meeting.
We could do that. We could do it Thursday, April 4. I can't do April 3.
The first is out for me.
Okay. How's the fourth for you?
Fine.
Thursday, the 4th, Tom?
Yeah, that's good with me. Third and fourth are good for me. What time do you guys want to?
Just like an hour, so we can get going.
Morning hour is good?
Sure.
Yeah, 10:30?
Sure.
Too early, Bruce?
Um...
11?
No, no, no. Afternoon, I may be coming up.
How about noon?
No, what about, say, 3 o'clock?
No.
Then let's pick a different day. I have to be in the city on Wednesday. I may sleep over.
All right.
What about the 5th, if you want to do it in the morning?
11 o'clock on the 5th?
What time?
11 a.m. I suppose I could make that happen on the 5th. 11 on Friday, the 5th? It's fine with me, Bruce.
I'll try. I don't know right now.
Fine. All right, we'll just get started, and then we can, you know, I'll send you guys links.
Whatever you guys can agree with, with the other municipalities, you know, ahead of this, so that we could probably...
I'll send you guys all the links. Everybody brainstorm.
I mean, I'm good show up with it. I'm fine with that, too, you know?
What?
If you show up with that info, it's good.
Yeah. You know, but we also need to identify things that we want to, you know, get done, not just to get money, to get, to get money, but...
Right, right, right.
Maybe the dog thing is an initiative that could get funded.
It's got three towns involved. It's not bad.
Yeah, maybe there's funding for the dog park in Red Hook. Maybe, you know, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah.
I'll have, I'll, you know, reach out and make sure I talk to Owen Rafter, and I'll get as much information as I can.
You think we can invite him to the workshop?
I don't know. I don't know to what extent he's, you know, giving guidance on this and what his work entails, but, you know, I had a long, Ann Saylor spent a long time with me on the phone today. She's heading up the other, you know, grants. There are three different grant legs, but...
So March, April 5 at 11 a.m.
Here at Town Hall?
Town Hall, yeah.
Great.
Workshop.
Thanks.
So any further for the county, actually, it's not a block grant, is it? It's the county...
Municipal consolidation and shared services. The block grants are what Ann Saylor heads up. That's the community block grants, and then there's the other...
And that's already done. That's not even...
Yeah, no, that Thompson and Mazarello got some money. And then there's a second portion, which is just non-for-profit, sort of, which...
All right. So item two for discussion is a planning board report in support of the core groups' zoning amendment request. Bruce, bring it up?
You want to introduce it, or you want me to?
You go ahead, sure.
So in our zoning review group, core group has come to us and asked for us to consider a zoning amendment for the property that they're developing on Middle Road, and we've put it before the zoning board, and the zoning board came back with a, with a positive review and support of it. I'd like to put it before the town board at this point so that you guys can do diligence and get any work done, or any questions answered that you want. If you want to speak to our land use attorney, John Lyons, and, you know, get his assurance that there's no spot zoning. I'd like to speak to the assessors and the building department. There are a couple questions I have about, you know, board of health approval and that process. We can, you know, take the time before we have our next board meeting to individually work on it and come back and take a vote at the next meeting.
Okay, and there's...
Yeah, there are 10 points here that the planning board reported on, and, you know, it's pretty succinct, and they've, they've recommended that we prepare and introduce a proposed local law to, to grant the draft zoning amendment. We're the lead agency in this. I'm not sure what type of, if it's a, you know, a one or a two, if it's going to need SECRE, but that's something we should look at within, you know, before our next town board meeting.
Well, I assume John Lyons can advise us on that, how we implement this.
Yes, yes.
Well, it does, well, it does involve SECRE, but we'll let him lead on that, I believe. But that's not really an issue for us.
Not an issue now. It's a public, I just wanted to talk about it in public and make sure that you guys have the time to look into this so we could vote on it at the next meeting. Sort of putting, you know, you could go and do our work and come back and discuss it.
All right.
It's our, it's really our first, you know, change under the comp plan, so a lot of good work has gone into this by our planning and zoning boards and our land use attorneys, so that's it.
All right.
I don't know if there's any other discussions, but I need to request an executive session with regards to the bargaining unit negotiations and the results of a, whatever it was, a complaint, arbitration with the bargaining unit.
Okay. And is any decision going to be made after this?
No.
Okay, so we have a motion. Is there a second to go into executive session pertaining to this?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? That's so moved, and we will not be voting on any issues tonight afterward.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Good night, Brad.